I'm gonna roll call.
Councilman Gray?
Here.
Councilwoman Green?
Here.
Councilwoman Gray?
Here.
Councilman Lethbridge?
Here.
Councilman Petty?
Here.
Councilmember Hackett?
Here.
City Attorney Griffin?
Here.
Yeah, I'll, I'll open this in prayer. Our most kind, gracious, and loving heavenly Father, we're just thankful for this day, and we're thankful for this opportunity that we can gather and, and just do the business of this town, Lord, and I pray that the, the, the citizens that we make will be pleasing to you, Lord. Be with those that are sick, be with those that are afflicted. I just pray that you will, you'll be with them, each, each one of those cases. Lord, most of all, we're just thankful for your son, for it's in his name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, uh, I guess y'all got a chance to look at the minutes. Uh, we're gonna approve two sets in a week. Special call meeting and, um, and then April's minutes.
Motion to approve.
Gail made a motion. Sam, second. All those in favor?
This is on which?
March 18th.
On March, okay.
18th special call.
And the other one's the April 3rd.
I mean, we can bring them out, or Gail, you wanna rephrase that as both sets of minutes?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Well, that's what I was gonna do.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Did we not reconsider buying the... Okay, I see it now. Never mind. Just ignore me.
So, do you wanna rescind this motion, or do you guys wanna keep it as two?
Keep it as two.
Okay.
It's our reason.
Okay.
Alls in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Smash motion here. Oh, non-emergency invoices over 10,000.
Cene's gonna help me, for example. We have several of these to not... She's fixing to hand that out to you. Okay, in addition to the, uh, normal health insurance, Tennessee's solidated retirement system, uh, if you look on the second page of your handout, there's one for water management services, uh, for $12,000. Um, that one is for the asset management plan that's part of the TDEC state water infrastructure grant. This was a mandatory thing, uh, that everybody had to get an asset management plan. Basically says this is how many manholes we have, how many lines we have, sewer lines, water lines, uh, but this is the last payment to water management services for that. Um, so it is above $12,000. If you look to the, uh, I don't know if you want to deal them individually or collectively, but we'll go to the next one. Uh, the next one is, uh, in your handout, it's called barge design solutions. Uh, this was for, we didn't have this invoice, um, until later in the month, 4/15. This, uh, invoice is to pay barge design solutions for their engineering consulting for the property assessment report that we had at the last meeting. Um, on that.
Okay, you're saying that the amount billed today was $30,000? And then the amount fees we give, $18,000, and now do this invoice is $12,000?
Yeah, that's, that's for water management services. That's correct.
Okay, so that's, that's not barge?
That's not barge. Barge, be the next one.
Yeah, the next.
The next one that we have is, um, let's do this one right here. I'll hand out some on this side. You take one, pass it down, please. Okay, the next one that we have is, uh, it's actually an emergency purchase, uh, before we, uh, wanted to, that you be aware of it. Uh, this one was for, I'm gonna let Derek speak to that one as well. Water leak by engineer.
Okay. This is one, uh, we had, uh, back during the cold snap, we had a lot of water loss for us to get over 200,000 gallons a day. Uh, we looked, couldn't find, find the leak anywhere, uh, so we had to hire this company to come in and find it for us. That's where they found the one in McDonald's that we dug up and picked. So, that's a payment for that company.
And that's kind of a thick package, but we gave you everything as far as, uh, you can track how much the water loss was, when it began, when it ended. So, that's what all that is. Uh, it's a big, thick package. I want you to be aware of that one. The, uh, the next one. This is Green. Take one of them back. Okay, this was for Thompson Equipment, and I'm gonna let Derek speak to that one as well.
During the, uh, water line installation on Smothman Avenue, we ran into a rock bluff, uh, and we didn't have the equipment to get in, uh, to get through that, so we rented a large piece of equipment from Thompson Cat with a hydraulic hammer to help break that rock and to finish putting that water line in. That rental was for two weeks. And you'll see also, I did obtain three quotes.
And what's this called? A jackhammer?
It's a hydraulic hammer.
Oh, no. It's different than a jackhammer. Cause I know in October, you purchased a jackhammer. Was it a jackhammer in October?
Trac-o.
Was it a jackhammer, was it a trac-o?
Ours wasn't bigger. This is a, a rock bluff. Ours, we have a smaller trac-o, a smaller excavator, so we can't put a real big hammer on it. Uh, we ran into this solid bluff, so we had to rent something bigger to get through it.
So, 61,000 pounds versus what ours is?
12,000. And I'm happy to say that all the main line on Smothman Avenue was put in, uh, and it has, it has been sanitized, it has been pressure tested, and water samples have been pulled. They come back good, so now we're ready to go back and put the houses up.
Okay.
Good.
Great.
Thank you.
And so, what's next, Derek? I mean, what, after, what road's next? Carmine? Okay. Uh, any questions? Make a motion to approve?
I, I make motions for proof.
I can second.
Thank you.
Okay, now discussion. Hey, listen. I'm new at this.
You've been doing good.
Uh, no discussions?
Oh, I, I have a discussion. On this barge, 13,744, and that's for general engineering, engineering consulting, Highway 25 bypass. Was there a contract on that?
Is there a contract?
Did the council vote on the contract? I never saw a contract.
You didn't have to. Professional services.
Can you explain professional services?
I explained professional services.
What's the difference in, in?
CPAs, attorneys, professional engineers.
Architects.
Architects. Um, those are the ones that are, it's based on professional reputation, skill level. As a public student, lowest bid. I use attorney for an example, uh, if my attorney charges $25 an hour, I'm probably not gonna use him. So, I know that the going rate's generally $300 an hour. So, but that's what professional services is. If I answered your question.
God, needn't go through the council? For the council to vote on it? I mean, they say the contract. I'm just asking.
Um, so, the last council meeting that we had, uh, before we, before we even looked at Highway 25, and we made the first proposal, which had been in March, I guess, um, that was a Thursday, uh, we were gonna talk about Sunny Hill Lane, then that morning, um, the attorney, Representative Stallings came in and said, "Hey, I'll sell you the Highway 25 property." So, that day, we got our engineer who's already been retained and was doing work with us to say, "Hey, we need to be able to advise the council what it would take, not only to purchase, but to prepare that land for building." So, that afternoon, we engaged them to do that, and then we presented their report to you on the following week for the special call meeting, so that you would have all information related to not only the purchase, but also the preparation, so that you can make a good decision.
We also discussed swapping from the former engineer to this engineer because Andre had suggested them, because the contract prior to that, the engineers and Andre couldn't meet in the middle of what needed to be on the town's liability. So, we did talk about that as well in the council meeting.
I just know there's a legislation that's just passed. Do you know about that? I was gonna ask you about that.
Sorry?
I wrote it down. If anything in the city that is done illegally, the state can be withheld, but with, can withhold funding.
Okay.
About contracts.
Do you have the statute?
No. I thought you might know.
Um, you know, I don't raise legislative bulletins every day, um, so.
I can get that too, you know.
Sure.
Okay.
Look it up as well. Um.
I just don't wanna be.
Nothing was done illegally, though, so I don't know.
I just, I'm just asking, because I don't recall seeing any contract. I did not see any contract. I mean, I've talked about a contract, but I didn't see a contract that's given to us.
Okay.
That's why I'm just asking.
All right. We can get copies of the contracts of barge design.
Well, I mean, it's a little late, but I think contracts should be come through us.
So, barge has, uh, a professional relationship with the town parlor. We hired them as, um, town's engineers. They replaced water management services consulting. Um, as the town's engineers, they were asked to do another project, to advise the council on the feasibility of constructing a town hall on land that the council was considering buying. All right? Um, they are allowed to do that. The town is allowed to ask the engineers, who they already have a professional relationship with, to perform that task without coming to the council and presenting a contract. It's like when Danielle or the mayor calls me, who you already have a professional relationship with, and says, "Hey, can you give me an opinion on this?" We don't have to convene the council and do a contract and have to vote on whether I can give a legal opinion on something. Okay? They already have, we already have a professional relationship with this engineering firm, and they were asked to do a task, and they build for that task. So, there's no contract to, to see. We have a relationship.
Master professional agreement with them.
Right.
That includes.
There's one master contract that says, "You're our engineers." Okay? There's not a separate contract for each thing that, that they do, other than avenue, um, or whatever else.
So, we still have one engineer? And that's barges of right now. Anything, if anything else was to come up, it's gonna be barge?
Unless somebody decides differently.
I think us as a council can decide anybody. And I'll tell you, C C, it was, it was very beneficial information, I felt like.
Mm-hmm.
But I would just like for someone to come through us more, you know, just, that's just not good.
But I think, is there open for discussion?
Yes.
I think that, I think we just need to, I know it's hard because of everything that's happened. We need to trust our supervisors and our leaders to lead us in the right direction. Where there's not so much animosity toward each other. And I, I don't have any toward you, and you don't make.
Oh, I know that. I'd just like to know what's going on, you know, out. I just don't.
Well, I'd be glad to take part of that blame, because I wanted them to assess that land with it being an affixed claim. I was like, our engineers need to give the opinion of what they think it's gonna take to build on that. So, that's, you know, I was immediately like, let's get them on the phone and see what they think.
And there was nothing wrong with that?
Yeah, and so the, the timeline, best I can remember, and y'all have me if I'm wrong, it was, we discussed it as a council, some property. Then this kind of became available between meetings. We were gonna maybe vote on purchasing some property, but we needed some information before the next meeting, so that's what happened.
Okay.
And the engineering firm, I think scrambled at the last minute and really quickly went out there, looked at the land, put together a very detailed report for everybody to consider. So, this is available for, for those services.
Which saves us 700, $700,000.
Right.
Well, yeah, and, and you could argue much more.
That's just the purchase price. That's not the fill.
Okay.
True.
I just wanna ask about contracts. Cause like, cause I've never seen one come through in front of us. That's why I'm just.
And some of them won't. I mean, we, we just did mowing contracts. We don't put those in front of y'all. I mean, you guys vote on the, the bid approval process of it and, and things like that. So, just so you understand.
All right, so we're at, any, anything? We're rolling. Roll call.
Okay. Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
No. I mean, yes.
Councilwoman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Lethbridge?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
So, are we at mayor's report now?
We are. Uh, nope, citizen's consent.
Citizen's consent, sir. Um.
Um, when you said you couldn't, I took it off.
Okay.
That's strictly up to the council.
It's my, it's my bad, cause I didn't, I thought it was gonna take about an hour to do this, and I didn't really burn it all back. I just did some basic stuff.
Uh. We don't have an hour.
Not an hour.
Well, no, no, no. That's, that's gonna take a couple. I just wanna, I wanna give you a couple handouts, could you ask for that? Unless we wanna do it later, that's fine.
I think everybody's got three minutes, and then what you have to say goes over the three minutes, we can entertain a motion to extend the time for however long.
And I apologize, I just didn't wanna, I've condensed this down. There, there's a whole box of stuff. If you wanna see the rest of it, I'll be glad to sit with you individually. But this is kind of what came to us through the, uh, TDEC priority list back in 2022, cause we had, when our administration came in, we realized that the number one priority had to be the water and sewer lines. And then we brought Mr. George Kurtz in, who had worked with TDEC, um, to look and do a survey of our sewer lines, work with our department to do that. TDEC said if he would come on board, cause he was the premier sewer person in the southeast, he had already done what they call an INI, uh, survey for Chattanooga, all of their lines, it's inflow and infiltration, and that's what we needed here, because our sewer lines end to leak, and we need to majorly replace this. So, he came in, bought, uh, we sent out an RFQ, request for qualifications for another engineer to come in and work with him. Together with TDEC, they gave us a 50/50, um, grant just to do that survey. And it came out with, we had a, a video of all the other lines. We had, for the first time ever, GPS manholes, uh, on, on the map, and then they had, and Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation, DDEC, got a template they used for the rest of the state. So, that's the setup for this. Come back into 2020, and they told us suddenly we were gonna have huge amount of money coming down, federal grant money coming down, in what was called priority loans, uh, state revolving fund, priority loans, one-time thing for the whole state. I think we had something like a billion dollars that came to Tennessee, to be divvied up between all of the counties, all the cities that qualified. And TDEC did that, because they already had the priority list in place, and that was the way they divvied it up. Every state had to do it. So, because we already had this prior arrangement and, and relationship with Mr. Kurtz, who was, who knew everybody at TDEC, he says, "You need to apply for that." So, we, in 2000, I think it was March 18th, I think, let me just look at the date to be sure. March 18th, yeah, March, excuse me, um, May 31st, 2023. Nope, 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 sorry. Let me back down. Uh, we applied on March 18th of 2022, and we didn't apply for loans, we didn't apply for anything. That's a confusion thing that's been kind of going around. We didn't apply for a loan. We applied to get on the, what's called priority list through TDEC. And we did quite well. We had three, um, what they call drinking water priority list, uh, listings, and then two for the clean water. So, what it all came out to is we got five letters from TDEC. I've got copies in here, I'll be glad to share with you. It's the only copies I have right now, but we had, um, I'll get my glasses using. Because it was, it was quite a, quite a win. I'm sorry, but it's, I really hope you can take a minute to, to.
All you're doing is going over stuff that happened three years ago. We're at a current meeting. We need to be considering current stuff.
Okay, but these people have asked, and some of the citizens wanted.
Why don't you just ask for a motion to want to extend?
Can we, can, can I get a motion that we extend Sarah's time?
For how long?
Uh, I mean, Sarah, how long do you think?
Okay, I'm gonna cut to the chase. Here.
Uh-uh, wait a minute.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
How much time do you need?
Two more minutes.
Okay. Can we give her three more minutes?
Sure, sure.
Uh, second, Anthony's motion.
Well, I didn't make the.
You just entertained it. Yeah, Gail made the motion.
Okay, I'll second Gail's motion. It's on. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Any opposed?
Okay. I, I understand Sam, but anyway, uh, that's the letters. Then we got on what's called the priority list. I just, it's online, you can all go look it up. It's, it's, it's archived, 2022 priority list for drinking water and, and for the, this. We have three listings. I'll pass this around. The whole thing came up to, we could've gotten if, if the next administration had chosen to go forward with this, into a loan, which we did not apply for a loan. It's just, so, so in the drinking water side, we came up with, um, we would've had up to, not over, the cap was up to, we could've taken any amount up to that amount, uh, up to about $10 million for the principal forgiveness of 67% to replace all of the water lines in town. In addition to that, we got, uh, a second one for $426,000 to do all the updates at the water plant that had been suggested were renegated by our supervisors. That was a 70% principal forgiveness. Uh, there was a mixture for the water tank up here that was needed to keep the water the way it was supposed to be going. That was gonna be 25,000. We could've gotten that for a 70% uh, water deduction. So, if, if you take those numbers, 67% of 10,000, I rounded it off, we could've saved, uh, we could've paid only 3 million, 3 million, 300,000 for that 10 million. We already had that in reserve. We wouldn't even had to lift a finger. We had that much in reserve already saved between grants that we had, COVID grants and things. And for the, uh, updates to the water plant, 466,000, 26,000, I rounded off to 400,000. 30% of that would've been 120,000. And then for, for what we already had, we already had almost over 5 million that we'd saved, reserved, whatever, we could've outright just done, redone the whole area for that. And, and the letters, as you'll see, we had up to four years to do this, and that was some confusion about that. It wasn't a year, it was up to three or four years. TDEC had talked about having extension of that if we needed it, if we already had the project going. Um, you didn't have to take the whole matter. In this case, we could've taken the whole matter, because we had enough already in our reserve fund to cover that. So, we could've had the whole water side. Now, when we got to the sewer side, it was a little more difficult. But I'm just saying, um, we laid it out, we presented it, and it's just a shame that we had to raise our rates 33% for people who were having a tough, tough time affording there. I got validation for everything I'm saying here. It's in a huge file. I'll be glad to sit down with any of you. But people have asked me about that, and I, here it is, and we can move on. What Sam said, it's water over the dam. We'll never get that money back. It was a one-time thing. Now, we, you do have an opportunity with Congressman Rose, something from Congress that we tried for, went through appropriations in the subcommittee, almost got it. That was $12 million straight out. So, you need to follow up with him, cause that's every two years, and he could help you get that.
Thanks, Sarah.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Uh.
Anybody else?
Yeah, do you have other citizens?
Yeah. Any other citizens?
My name's Stephanie. I live in Jefferson. I don't know if we're still supposed to do that. Um, I wasn't planning on talking when I came. I was planning on just watching, but I decided to. Um, I like that questions are being asked a little bit more. I don't like the tension that I feel. Still, um, and I get, I get why it's there. There's a big distrust that's happened between the last 10 years of administration up here and everybody out here. And I think that needs to be resolved slowly, and it might be painful. But I would like to see that happen a little easier somehow. If it's the council members meeting with supervisor heads outside of council meetings to make sure you understand what's going on. If you haven't, I've been to, I'll go ahead to the supervisors, just as a citizen out here, to make sure I understand their department and the things they're doing, so that I'm not angrily emailing y'all about things I don't understand.
And we appreciate how you approach us always.
Cause I will angrily email you.
Well, you have to. I appreciate that.
Um, so, like, I would suggest, if you all haven't done that, go meet with all the supervisor heads, ask them to take you around the facilities that they maintain, and why they do what they do, and why they need what they need, and email a bunch of legal questions to the lawyer. Ask them first, maybe how that's supposed to be done, cause I don't know. I don't have access to him. Um, and just work on that a little bit. So, that's it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Mark Schwartz, Carthage, Tennessee. Wanted to speak something that Councilman Green said. I've had this conversation before with the council and with, with attorney. You have to do, I forgot, share the conversation I had with the district attorney. I'm former, 10 years state architect of Tennessee, state architect, city architect for Nashville. For 15 years, I've been doing contracts. I'm a certified contractor document technologist. And the chapter and verse that the council was asking for requires three things. Any public works project in the state of Tennessee, whether it's a government agency, even a nonprofit, requires that professional services be required, be acquired through an RFQ process request. Secondly, that contract, which was presented to us, which was put together in August, presented to this, uh, to the city in September, and voted on in October, has work in it that I got through the Information Act that was done prior to the contract being signed in October, actually, actually the contract. And the third thing in that contract is there is what I call an incentive, which is a nice word. It says, "If we get the contract to do the city hall project, we will credit the city for a certain amount of our fees." Now, I came from the Bland, and when they got rid of Bland for doing what Bland did. But again, those three things, and again, I'm no longer registered as an architect. I'm retired in Tennessee. But again, I would be remiss if I didn't share what Councilman Green says. You can't get professional services without going through Tennessee Code Edit, I believe, chapter 26 requires.
Thank you. Anybody else? All right, we're gonna move on to the mayor's report, and, and I, I want y'all to know that I'm not the mayor. Uh, Mr. Babcock is our mayor. Uh, he is unfortunately under the weather.
Uh, he is unfortunately under the weather, gotta have, have a procedure. So he's, I'm filling in for our mayor. And if you need me, call me or, or any council member. Uh, but, uh, you know, I don't, I don't want to overstep. Mr. Babcock, I'm just here to help. So, uh, I wanted that clear, kind of for the city to know that. Uh, that's, that's all I have. Um, Department, State of View will start and we'll go down the line.
Okay, I really don't have much to report on. We're kind of coming out of the wet season because last time we hauled any slush to fill was in October. And this is my, and we still haven't hauled any, but this is the first year in 30 years where we started going to the back of the plant, tried our little thing, putting the tubes in. We tied up $25,000 putting in a system that would probably cost $250,000. And, uh, as of yesterday, we wasted 175,000 gallons of one tube. Still using the first tube. We got room for four of them. So this is the first winter in 30 years that we've been able to actually waste out of the system instead of just trying to keep it in the plant. So that was good news for us, as stated as expectation. Um, I don't know, we might get $200,000 yet. I don't know whether to quit or let it bust, you know. It blows up like it's going to bust and then the water drains out and it comes down. But that's been real good for us. And like I say, it's the first winter, I guess Ricky's been down here for almost 30 years. And they said he's never been able to waste in the winter. We always have that bottleneck. And because of the council and, and the mayor and thankful that's given us opportunity, we've been able to, for $25,000, and everybody that worked in house, other departments come down and help us, we've been able to take that bottleneck out. So that's positive for us and Towne of Carthage. Does y'all got any questions? That's all I have.
Thank you, State.
Thank you.
Last, last month, I told y'all that, uh, we had just completed a sanitary survey on the water system. And I hoped to report the findings through the state. I, I actually got that report a day later. So I, I laid it on all of your packs tonight. That, that's the official sanitary survey letter from the state of Tennessee. Um, I know sometimes we get a bad write-off on our, our town water. Uh, if you'll check that report out, we scored a 99.8%. We scored, uh, 598 points out of 599. We had one thing they found, and it was just a missing strainer's screen on a overflow pipe. So, uh, according to the state of Tennessee, uh, Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation, we, we do a excellent job of our water encouragement. So I just wanted y'all to know that, uh, whether you feel like you're getting good water at your house or not, uh, you do have good water.
Coming out of the plant.
Yeah, yeah.
Our old lines are a problem. We're working on that. That's where the most of the, to be honest with you though, I know nobody wants to do this and neither do I. But your problem in this town is corrosion and rust in these old pipes. Because some of these old pipes were just regular cast iron and some older than that. So the sediment that you're getting in your house is more likely rust. It, it, it won't make you sick. Nobody wants to drink it. I, I get that, but, uh.
That's why you see a suspension of a lot of water. Yeah.
That's a necessary part of it.
Yeah, the echo rust, you remember, you know, we had that pipe, you know, that was all terrible. So leaves rusty, it's good. And Derek's working on getting that done.
It's 27 miles along.
It's, it's a process. All right, Derek.
Rest of you, yeah, I'm done.
Thank you, Russ.
I've already given you a report on the smothering. I don't, I don't really have anything else unless y'all have any questions.
I do when they're gonna pay smothering because I've been asked that.
Oh, the next thing will be the, the sewer on the smothering. And I think the legal and, and the engineering firm's working on a contract. And just since that contract is, is signed, then it'll go out for bid.
Okay, thank you.
Contract for the contractor that's going to perform those services.
Correct.
Thank you, Derek.
Didn't, didn't have a lot of, bought anything new. Did have a free fall cemetery, got it cleaned up. Uh, worked on the pavilion at the park, done some carpentry work down there. Shorted up, uh, pickleball courts are repaired. Um, did talk to Mickey Barrett, coal mix, he got a little coal mix today. So we'll start trying to do some patches on some of the roads. So we're just, business as usual. You got any questions for me?
Thank you. Fire chief, see you out there.
Y'all have my written report. It may not be complete, but in the first month, everything may not have printed out. So we'll be corrected by. We also are hosting Haiti. Inter, we're facing clients beginning in June. We're opening that up for everybody in the county. Uh, it won't cost the city any more to do that with this brush. It's roughly $300 for clients. They don't charge us anything. So I have somebody that hopefully will be furnishing some meals on the weekend while we train. We've got hostess beginning next week. That's an annual thing. Past that, I don't have anything else.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. Is, uh, Mr. Britt?
Yes, sir. Yeah. Y'all have a monthly report there. Is it going good? No serious issues or things lately? Best as it can be anyways. So if y'all have any questions, I'm glad to answer them for you if I can.
Um, citizens have been asking about the, uh.
Traffic light.
Yes.
Last I knew that they had a issue with the pouring of it. It was backward, I guess, or whatever. So as soon as they get that backward and that piece in, hopefully it will be fixed as soon as possible. We are waiting on the company right now to get it and install it. But everything else is on track. So hopefully in the next month or so, I'm hoping, fingers crossed. But we're just waiting on them now to finish it up. So, yes, I wish I, I wish it's already done.
But we're waiting on the part?
Yep.
Okay.
Waiting on the stuff to get in and get it installed. So once they install it, it shouldn't take just a beta install out of this thing. So, cool. Okay. Anything else?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Oh, Scott, I guess the Department of Commerce.
That's where you, Scott.
Figured in just a little bit, I'll get to speak a lot. You have the written report, uh, finances. We've gone over in the workshops. Any questions to be, to be answered? We are posting monthly to the website, financial reports.
Any questions, council, for Scott? Thank you, Scott. I don't know who's gonna talk about the tornado siren.
Turn it off.
It looks like there's some, uh, there's some options here we got. If I can find that. So I guess you got one, two, three, four, five, six options.
All of these, all of these options are what were set by the previous council. Um, I, I, I'm in touch with company and I can have it do whatever y'all decide you want it to do. You just need to let me know what that is.
That one, where it's imminent danger and you need to take shelter, that one. Tornado's coming, get in the basement.
A warning, tornado warning.
I guess, whatever it is.
Are you making a motion?
I'm just talking. Just talking. Because I mean, that, the people wore me out with that thing.
Okay, I'm, I would like to make a motion that the tornado siren only.
Can you give the number, uh, John?
That's what I was about to do, sir. Uh, numbers one, two, and three, excluding four, five, and six. So the public knows, number one is, um, a test of the warning system. Number two is also a test. Number three is, uh, a tornado warning. It says seek shelter now. Number four, that I'm not including in my motion, is a flash flood warning. I don't want it to go off for that. Number five is a severe weather warning. That's the one that goes off 24 times a year, it seems like. Number six, a winter weather advisory. So my motion, if I get a second, is, is, my motion is to include messages one, two, and three. The two warnings and tornado warning only. Okay, we got a motion in a second, Sam and Sam.
Go ahead. I had a question, but I'm, I'm supposed to wait.
Oh, no, it's second.
I think we're in discussion.
Okay. Uh, how often will we have to run those tests?
Those tests can also be performed as a silent test.
Okay.
It could be, it could be checked without the siren acting. I think they're actually scheduled once a month.
Yeah, they go off like one Friday in March.
They've been doing it continuously. They're just silent.
Well, theirs aren't always silent.
They're testing.
No, every once in a while, they do a test. There's two, two tests, so.
Perhaps one is silent, one is not, maybe. I think the test is.
Can we, can we ask them not to do it during school hours?
Or not.
Well, I know that, I know that, I know the special needs.
When I'm out of town.
I know the school has, has children that it has upset. Because I've had that conversation. So even if it was just after school hours, I don't, I don't know. I've not talked to them about timeframes, but that might be something that we should consider. Sorry, guys.
Well, I don't know what the, the will of the board is, but now that we have information that one and two can be a silent test.
Exactly.
That might be.
They, they do recommend, you know, that you do a full audible test every once in a while.
Yeah.
Just to make sure that the sirens actually function.
Is that something we can maybe do quarterly and put it in the paper and on Facebook and whatnot?
I think they were, I think they asked for what, once monthly to do it audible. But we could, but we. But we could post it. That's not a problem. And say, you know, the third Friday of every month or whatever day.
At least Facebook, it's free that way.
Yeah.
Could not just blow it one time to quit.
Well, I think the test does. The one in Gorgonville, I think it announced it's, it's doing its tests and then it goes off. But that, that way that you know the siren works and you don't have to have somebody come in and repair it or you're waiting for it to go off and it doesn't.
Yeah, that'd be bad.
I've had a suggestion made that we do it simultaneously with South Carthage.
When they do their test?
I guess Roger, maybe Roger, could you check that?
Well, that, that actually is with the National Weather Service. So, you know, whenever they get there, they get ours, maybe separate times.
Ours is based on location.
Well, he's talking about, you're talking about the test.
Are you talking about the test?
The test, yeah.
Oh, I don't know when they do their test.
I don't know about the test, I can check.
See if we can do that. Well, that's my opinion.
And I would find out what, if we can change times, that there's a set time that we could put that maybe after school hours.
And again, I don't mean to be speaking out of turn here. I don't know that the tests were necessarily what gets under people's skin. I think it's at four o'clock in the morning when it keeps going, there's a storm coming. Now, if it says there's a tornado coming, absolutely. But when there's, I mean, like, if it thunders, you know there's a storm coming.
Yeah, true.
God's giving us a test.
Yes. And it's like, the storm was 50 miles away from us. About one.
And sometimes it doesn't even rain and it goes off twice. So, yeah. I don't think that's what the public's.
That's the main thing.
So we got a motion in a second. Any more discussions? And I think Roger's gonna check, uh, Sam to see if we can do a simultaneous test with South Carthage at the same time. Um, all right. All those in favor, Sam?
All right.
Any opposed? Motion passed. Uh, consideration of the CD Point Dexter House.
Uh, second.
All right, Sam Graves made a motion to pass on the purchase of or, or consideration of the Point Dexter House. Sam, can you second it? We have any discussion?
Well, I'm just gonna, I'm just putting it off the table.
Well, let's, uh, I don't know, is that part of, should we vote on this in particular?
The motion, the motion was to pass on purchase of this property in a second. So that's what's in discussion now, but we're, if it relates to that, you can, I think it's relevant. You can discuss it.
I'm, I'm curious, how, why is this on the agenda? Was this requested?
It was discussed last.
Just because we discussed it in a meeting?
And it was talked about bringing back next time. Steve was originally supposed to contact figure to see price and you guys just discussed it, discuss it as an option.
Oh, okay.
That's why I.
Well, uh, for me, it's, just like I stated last time, I'm not against it. But what, what would we be doing here? Would we be voting to buy it? Would we be coming up with an idea tonight or what's going on?
Motion on the table is to not buy it.
The motion on the table is to not buy, okay.
The more we think, I thought about it, it's gonna be a phenomenal amount of money to get that where we need to be. Elevators, not only the elevator, but the other handicap, trying to find enough parking there is, it's just, it's gonna be astronomical to do it.
I'm sure there's mitigation on that too, as old as it is.
Yeah. Going from one old building to another.
Yeah. So what we've done, since I've been on the board, we just, we just kept throwing, in my opinion, one bad decision after another.
Absolutely.
Yeah. I think we're either gonna have to get, you know, we're gonna have to expand our, we're gonna have to figure out some different options. I think we need more quotes on this building, a building in this area. Uh, and again, it's just, it's just me thinking out loud, but, uh, most of the citizens that I talked to keep, and, and granted, I know you folks working here. We, we, I think the council, I don't want to speak for everybody, we want to make this a safe place.
Absolutely.
But I think we want to make sure that we can't do it here. And, and I think we can get some, some quotes. I know we've gotten some quotes. Maybe we need to revisit, revisit that. I guess we're gonna have to get, uh, more, put our thinking hats on or something.
Get creative.
Yes, sir.
Could we look at, look, building a police department, smaller land on land we own?
Right down there.
Come over here, get that lane, go over here, seat it off, rework part of the building, move the water over to that, but then they're driving through, through. Then come over here on this side and work some of this out and not lease the.
What, and we, we've discussed that some, Sam, and I, I think that would be fine. Obviously, we're gonna have to get some, some ideas of what Brett needs. One of the things that came up is like remediation. When you start taking asbestos off, can you wall off half of this? I think probably, uh, and then work on that.
But we didn't have that much asbestos, right?
See, that was before me, but yeah, I don't think it was a ton.
It's just a small amount, as long as we didn't disturb it.
It's, it's not just asbestos, I don't think. I think it's asbestos, there's some mold, probably some lead-based paint that, that needs to be, while we're doing it, we should visit it. Um, can y'all think of anything else? Uh, city employees, those are the big three. Obviously, this wall, Sam, you know, we, they.
They're painting the wall.
I, I feel like the wall could be fixed or can be reworked or tore down, French drain, whatever. I'm not in the excavation business, but there's plenty of people that are that know a ton more than me. I think we could, we could look at getting that fixed. Uh, but anyway, so back to, uh, back to our initial, uh, motion and second. So Sam has made a motion that we pass on the Point Dexter property in San Peters. Pass on the Poin Dexter property in, uh, Sam Petty's saying. Any more discussion? All right, so we, we don't need a roll call.
No, I mean, if we.
Let's roll call that.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Luthridge?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
Okay, uh, and somebody else is gonna have to head in here. Demo of First Avenue, Avenue West property. Real quick, I'll tell you what I know about it. It's, it's down here under the bridge. It's next to the church. It's kinda breeds bad stuff, Brett.
Yes, sir.
Andre, you got the pictures.
It's the old stone house.
It isn't even, it's not even, like, the property itself is not on the register. It's not, it's a structure.
I didn't know it was there.
When it grows up, you can't even see it.
Yeah.
It's bad.
A house to the gentleman. It's been a, it's been a huge process to get to the point of this, I, I, you know, I know we don't, we don't tear people's stuff down just on a whim.
No, this has been years.
So I think this has been in the works.
People sleeping in there, people using drugs in there.
Do we know how much it's gonna cost to tear it down?
We do not, we've not, we've not tried to put that out or do anything.
Just a.
Well, I mean, they.
I'm sorry, no, I was just gonna say, that's what it's in front of y'all, man, I think it's.
To even move forward.
It's a y'all's decision and the attorney.
So where we are is the, the building inspector has gone out there, has determined that this building is unsafe and therefore is a public nuisance. The building inspector has posted on the building that no one is to occupy it. Then the next step is for building inspector to come and make a report to the council. Brett decided to do that since he's seen it and knows about it. First step is for the council to listen to that report and then, um, if there's cause to notify the owner of the property in writing to come and appear before the council. For a hearing. And then based on any testimony or evidence that, uh, presented at that hearing. If the council decides that there's sufficient cause to condemn the building and tear it down, then the council sends a written order to the owner of that property. To have it demolished, and if that's not complied with within ten days, then the public authority can demolish it. So, um, I think the action to take tonight is to order the owner of the property to appear at a certain date and time before the council. For a hearing on this matter. And that, uh, in order to expedite the process and not drag it out another month, um, probably do it at a special call meeting, but that's up to you all. So.
It's set there this long.
Yep.
It's set there this long, I think it can.
The property hasn't been paid on it?
I don't, yeah, I don't, I don't know that he's got any tax.
It's just the structure.
Right, but if it hadn't been paid.
All right, legally, how much time do we have, how much notice do we have to give this gentleman before he appears?
It doesn't say, but, but the, uh, time for his compliance with an order is ten days, so I'd do at least ten days. Now, I think we know that the owner of this property is.
He's not gonna.
Well, what's, what's his situation?
Well, he's not in good health right now, but he, he would have likely.
It's an elderly person.
He lives in Nashville.
Probably wouldn't show up.
We've, we've dealt with him on other properties for, for several years now. This is not the neighborhood.
I don't think it's a time-sensitive thing.
I don't either.
Wait till the next council meeting. I think it's fair, but if you also wanna expedite, that's up to y'all. Well, I mean. I think councils have been dealing, but Sam, like, you, I guess you could make a motion that one, we find out are the taxes paid. And two, that we move. Whether they're paid or not, this property needs.
Does it claim it up or claim it up?
Well, that, that, there's been letters sent, there's certified letters sent, there's a whole step process to what we do.
The, the action to take is to order him to appear before the council at the next meeting for a, for a hearing on this matter, so I think that's the motion.
I'll make that motion.
Sam Petty's made, Sam Gray's saying.
Now, does he have to pay for the cost of this?
The city can do it, and then it's a lien against the property.
Okay.
Okay, we'll get our money back.
Not likely though.
Right.
Well, once it's, yeah, once it's sold, we want to get it back.
Are we doing next meeting? How did you?
That's what I, the key to the motion, yeah.
Who's second that, would I use?
Well, if he said ten days, that's thirty days, so that's three times.
Yeah.
I think that's fair.
Thirty days is definitely not good.
Is that okay, is, or is any more detriment that would occur in thirty days to the town?
So not caught anybody in there in the last little bit, that is, I mean, they won't be there in there.
Okay.
I think that's fair. All right, any, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Most curious. Um, so we got a, a new hire, uh, not necessarily new, um, and, and somebody's gonna have to speak on this a little bit, cause. He's been at one department and, and maybe Derek, you can talk about.
Sure.
I think he's doing a good job, but anyway, he wants to go to another department that is, that will be full-time.
Correct.
And if I'm wrong, help me, but.
No, I, I had hired, hired him on as a part-time, uh, to help with the, the water line installation. And a, a full-time spot has come open in the street department side, and he's wanted to secure that full-time slot, so he's, he's applied for that. Great worker, couldn't ask for anything better, uh, definitely recommend.
Hey, I'm sorry, John. Nothing. You, you have his, uh, in, in your packet, you have his, um. Application, yeah.
We have several, several interviews, uh, we had eight or ten applicants, everybody was interviewed. This seemed to be the best pick for our team, me and Wes and Derek all sit down, interview them all. Uh, he has great knowledge on equipment, like water lines, sewer lines, street department. And we'd like him if it's okay with y'all.
I'm at the motion. Second.
Yeah, it's fine. Sam made a motion, uh, John has seen. Any other discussion? All right, roll, let's roll call this one, I guess.
Well, it's full-time position. Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilwoman Green?
Yes.
Councilman Gray?
Yes.
Councilman Luthridge?
Yes.
Councilman Petty?
Yes.
All right, motion.
Here's the gentleman right here. Oh, Brandon.
And everybody's saying good things about Brandon.
Um, so Scott, first reading of, uh, the budget for it.
Everybody got that in front of them? It's got the first page and it's got, uh, we've had two workshops. There've been a few adjustments that have been made, uh, to the work papers that you've had now for two months plus. You can kinda see what's been done, there's nothing that's been major, the only major thing that I would say, or there's three items that I would say is number seven. I'm gonna let Sally Woodard speak to this, but she wants to, uh, to hire an assistant pool manager and I'm gonna let Sally, uh, speak to that. If you would.
Well, I have the funnest job of all of you guys here, so, just so. I've been doing it a long time. I'm not ready to give it up, but I have a young lady that used to be a lifeguard. She worked for me several years ago, and she has moved back to town. I would like to maybe give her a few hours. Show her what I do, which anybody can do, but, um. I spend a lot of time at the park, it's a wonderful, wonderful park. There's not a kid that I don't like, you know, I can make it work. I'm not gonna let anybody come down there that doesn't have the money to swim. I'll let them swim or I'll pay for it, you know, doesn't, doesn't matter. But I would like to hire a young lady to at least realize what the state regulations are, because they're what still. I try to follow those. To the forest, then the city, and then you guys tell me what you want and I'll do my best to produce it.
Thank you, Sal. I think, uh, so that's been, that position has been added into the budget. For the same number of hours that Sally has, I don't think the person will be there that full-time, but it, it's been added into the budget. Okay, in Public Works, um. We've adjusted to reflect the new hire, um, Braden, at a lower range weight. You can read these, I don't need to go through each one of them. Uh, big items, nine and ten, uh, removed the parks and recreation bathroom line item, based on the tenor of the last council meeting. Uh, nobody gave me any further direction, anything we do tonight can be changed for the second reading. Uh, Public Works, F and A Police, uh, the Police and Administration Building, I've removed, uh, that based on tenor of last council meeting. Uh, the rest of those are, um, minor adjustments, but they're all based on information that we've gotten since, um, the last workshop. So updating things to, to better reflect what we need. So, what I would recommend at this point in time, Cindy's gonna show you, uh, on the general fund up here. Uh, so for FY twenty-six, the first reading indicates that we are anticipating a surplus in the general fund. Of three hundred and thirty-two thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars, that reflects all the changes that are in here. Okay? And if you don't have any input, we'll move on to the, or questions about the general fund. I'll just go through the whole thing so you can see the whole picture, and then you can, we'll come back to it. So, next one.
All right, next question.
All right, question, question.
Do we still have the potential for City Hall Build in this budget proposal?
Uh, my recommendation is, based on the conversations and all, is number one, council needs to decide what you wanna do. Number two, then you need to decide how much you wanna spend, how much you wanna borrow, all together. And then thirdly, uh, once you've made those decisions, then we, we'll go through the process of making a budget amendment and adding it to the budget.
So.
That's my recommendation.
You, is it in?
It's not in there.
It's not in here, okay. Well, that's what, that, that's gonna be something.
We've tried that for two years.
Yes, sir, in all fairness, uh, half of us have not been here very long, um, and I, I think it was kinda obvious that we, we really wanna explore. What we can do at this facility, maybe something else, we're, we're trying.
Of course.
So, and the three point five was what we had been budgeting to work with, is that correct? Three point five billion?
That's what we had budgeted last year.
I mean, we just don't know, we need more information, so, you know, we don't really know what we would wanna borrow, cause we don't know what it would cost.
Right, and that's what I'm saying. Figure all that out, then we'll just do a budget amendment, once, and we'll have a firm plan of what we wanna do, and all it takes is two months and we'll, we'll budget amendment.
Correct.
And add it to the budget in the way that you folk.
So. Is, is this a, this is what we think.
Right.
But this is real?
No, that's an estimated, okay? Uh, I think that one's underestimated. The first column, let me do this, first column in, in the ordinance is the, from the audit report, okay? That's the actual FY twenty-twenty-four, okay? Then the third column is the estimated, what we're planning through six-thirty of twenty-twenty-five. Uh, my crystal ball is about there, but right now, that's what I'm estimating, is sixty-eight thousand surplus this year of sixty-eight thousand, one sixty-six. And I really think it'll go up from there. For the general fund, remember, keep your funds straight, general fund doesn't have anything to do with water and sewer fund, okay? Takes comptroller action of that happen. Okay, uh, so sixty-eight thousand, I'm, I'm anticipating a, um, a surplus of that amount, but we'll update those figures for the second reading.
I guess what I'm getting at, we know this is, this, so we had a deficit in the general fund this year of.
No, that's last year, six-thirty, twenty-four.
This particular year.
When does the fiscal year end, Scott?
June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five.
So we know this number's right, and thi- this is a guesstimate, as well as this.
That's right.
Okay.
That's, that's as good as you can do, and this is the format that comptroller requires, it's not something I put together.
Yeah. Okay, sorry, thank you.
Yep. Now, sanitation fund, that one's straightforward, we bill out amount each month, and we pay TDS, so there's not a lot there. If this breaks even, little loss, it's okay. As long as we have the cash, and we do, so we're in good shape on that one. Next one. Street aid fund, uh, we generate roughly a hundred thousand dollars a year of tax revenues. For the last three years, we haven't spent any of that, uh, we have prior, when we did Main Street, we paid some out of that. But in any case, um, that two hundred and sixty thousand represents hole, represents smotherment. And then we've got monies in the general fund that we can spend on streets when we get there. We get that much spent for streets in twenty-twenty-six, we'll be doing, we'll be doing good, okay? So, change in fund balance, go back Cindy. I'm sorry, it's okay. It says a hundred and fifty-nine thousand of funds to be used, let's find, we're still gonna have, uh, over a hundred thousand dollars of cash in that fund. At the end of June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-six, okay? So, um, now, I would point out to you, there always is confusion, fund balance does not mean cash, okay? Fund balance does not mean cash, uh, that also includes other assets and liabilities included. Just so happens to be very close for the state street aid, because we don't have any other assets nor liabilities in there. So, you can't say fund balance is how much cash we have, that's not so. Okay, next slide. Drug proceeds, uh, we get drug fund compensation, uh, and we book that. And then the only thing that, uh, we spend out of that is, uh, what Chief Davis desires, is specifically related, related to drug enforcement. So we're anticipating nine thousand, he's yet to spend everything that we've budgeted, uh, in the past, um, but we already, you have that detail. Yes, sir.
That, uh, amount, the nine thousand is estimated, can any of that be used for tearing down that building?
No.
Okay.
Chief Davis?
I suspected that, but I wanted to ask.
I, I don't think the building down the avenue qualifies for drug proceeds use. Okay, yeah. No, sorry. Yeah. But we'll get to it in just a little bit. That answer your question?
It sure does.
Okay.
It was the answer I thought was gonna get.
Okay. All right, um, next one is the water sewer fund, that is the most complex. The first yellow line there says operating income or loss, that's one of the criteria that the water board looks at. It's, I'm anticipating, we've budgeted right now, nine thousand, eight hundred and ninety-eight dollars of a, of an income. That is very, very close, and that figure will change depending upon how quickly we get done, uh, with smotherment. And car Mac, and how quickly, whenever the Corps of Engineer comes in to book their project. Uh, so the depreciation expense will impact that figure there. Uh, but if you'll notice, um, operating expenses, and see the line item that's down below it, depreciation, notice how it goes up, okay? Put all those. Put all those water lines and sewer lines, regardless of the source of income, we're gonna depreciate them and that expense is gonna go up, okay? Uh, I recommended in the, uh, proposals, I recommend that we increase rates two and a half percent a year, so you don't have to do thirty-three percent. The information that was presented earlier has nothing to do with the rates. And I'll give you some information on that for your perusal later, but borrowed money doesn't affect your, your rates, okay? And neither does capital contributions. If you look down at the bottom, capital contributions, um, just take the first one from the Corps of Engineers, they're gonna contribute one point six million dollars for our bank, okay? Well, that's not operating income. So the water board doesn't look at that as to see is our business making money? Because they know that source, they want us to have rates that make sure we cover current operating expenses. Okay, uh, and I'll just remind you that we have a resolution that's been submitted to TDEC that we, in the next five years, we would increase our water rates three to six percent just so we could borrow two point seven million dollars, okay? So, how you do that, it's up to you. Uh, my recommendation is follow the inflation rate and go up each year, it won't be that big a hurt to the people. But I am not immune to the difficulty that that presents, but that's the reality of it. That's the facts, that's all I can present to you. Okay, so if you look at, um, I think we're very tight on water sewer fund, but I think we've got one more year that we can, can make. Uh, but you need to seriously think about increasing rates each year. Okay, so I want to change now to the, to your handout, if you would. And look at page six of your handout. And I apologize, I didn't get this one on the PowerPoint. Page six, just so you know, uh, this is where we list out, these are the capital assets. These are the cars, okay, computers. And how it's, this is one of the most helpful tables to help you to know, so you can... All this was in the workshops for two and a half months, okay? So, Finance Administration, thirty-nine thousand. Police Department, wanting fully equipped patrol car, seventy thousand. Drug enforcement, equipment for the chief, nine thousand. Fire Department, that's fire hose and appliances, eighty-eight, a hundred dollars. And from a layperson's standpoint, appliances doesn't mean refrigerators, that's fire equipment, okay? So, Public Works Department, new streets, uh, two-hundred-and-sixty thousand we're planning to spend in the next fiscal year, funded from the street aid fund, drainage repairs, minimal amount. We went through in the workshop, the Chevy Silverado four-wheel drive to replace the twenty-year-old vehicle that we have here. We already have a new snow file, we talked about that. The side-by-side, we went over that in the second workshop, that's why that was needed. Parks and Recreation Projects, I have no idea what the council leadership, mayor or leadership may want to do, but that does not include any bathrooms. Come down to the water sewer fund, equipment, pump stations and equipment. We're gonna fund one more pump, uh, in the coming year, which we're trying to get the two pumps that we've already had bid out, hopefully we can get them done by June thirtieth. Sewer plant, you got the bank erosion, um, you can kinda see, um, that's two point three million dollars. Since we haven't decided, voted, how we're gonna finance it, I bet it put as estimated revenues we can... This is just an estimate, this is the best we can do. For the water and sewer lines, clean water, uh, we have a state revolving fund loan, that's in process of waiting, it's been approved. Engineers, attorneys are working out the wording for the bidding to happen. So hopefully in the next month or two, we'll be able to get bids out and get that project going, that sewer lines. And drinking water replacement, we, that's smotherment, okay? That's what Derek and his crew have been doing, we're installing them ourselves. We can do that for about at least two hundred dollars cheaper per, per foot, okay? That figure is done through computations. So that part is there, but it's not our decision, but that's, that's where it's at right now unless I get direction. So I want to ask you to look to page eight, okay? Once everybody's to page eight, turn one more page. And it says page seven, okay? Because it comes out of two different comptroller documents, okay? So this is the detail that flows up into those things that you see in the actual ordinance itself. But these are detailed sheets that we have to submit along with the budget itself. So if you wanna know detail, how did we come up with all the figures? Or Finance Administration or Police Department, just go to these detailed sheets. And right-hand column, it has budget this year, twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six, okay? For each fund. And the way this document is put together is based on those worksheets that we did in the workshops, okay? First and the second. So this is the document that we'll work from now. So, willing to try to answer any questions that you might have, but now it's in, almost in your court. I'm gonna give you two, two documents. And this is something for you to read. Just take one of these, pass it down, okay? My job is to give you facts, and then that's what I'm gonna do tonight. And then I'm gonna let you, if you got questions, explanation, I'm gonna let you come to your own decision. I'm not gonna refute anything that's been said previously this evening. I've done enough of that and I'm complete, okay?
Thank you.
Want to pass it down? Take one, pass it down. But basically what I'm giving you is, um, history from February seventeenth, I think it is, of twenty-eighteen for the state revolving fund loan program in the town of Parkage until April twentieth fifth. You're smart people, you can read it, you've got questions. That's the facts, you can make your own judgment calls about anything else that's been presented to you by anybody else. All right, questions? About budget, it's up to you to, for them to have discussions about whatever.
Can I, can I ask a quick question on that?
Yes.
What page, help me with this, what page was that where we, oh, here we go, page six? And, and you made the comment, Scott, that we have not voted on how to spend this money. You know, we, this seven-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars.
We talked about it.
We did talk about it, and we had, he presented different options. I guess my question is, I know that things move slow until they don't, maybe? So will the Corps of Engineers come in and say, like, we're ready, we need to know what y'all are gonna do?
Steve, I, I doubt it very seriously.
Okay, so we'll have time to vote on how we want it? Fund is seven-hundred-and-thirty-one thousand, okay?
We may not even hit it in twenty-twenty-six. But again, we may, I don't know. I'll let him, he's put it off for two years, it's been going on now for at least four years, so...
They told us recently that it was gonna be next year of summer time, is what they told us.
Summer of twenty-twenty-six.
Yes.
For our purposes, that's very important, whether it's before June thirtieth or after June thirtieth of twenty-twenty-six.
Yeah.
That's the best I can do, we've got it planned, if we need to borrow money. If they come and say, hey, we're ready to go, then we can say, uh, okay, we gotta get our money in order. We've already paved the way with City Municipal Bond Fund.
They just have to notify.
Got that relationship established, and they've got it with the local banks, so... But I didn't wanna show it as debt proceeds because doubt it's gonna happen in this fiscal year. Hope it does, hope it does, just word, it hasn't been.
No, I don't know about the rest of the board, but I won't forget that proposal that we had done on the different place to pay it. So, you know, if it's a year from now, I'll be like, I don't remember, I need to refresh. Let me ask a question, Scott. The, the bathrooms that we never decided on or never got quotes on for the city park, that was just taken out and we didn't...
Nobody gave me any direction, so...
Didn't we have... Order was for us to get, uh, some bids, you know, some, yeah, so...
Didn't we have an estimate or something?
We, we, the only thing, maybe what you're referring to is we were discussing and talking, we just didn't know, we were just asking, last meeting, did we have to pay fifteen thousand dollars, I think it was, for an engineering estimate on that? Was that what you're basing on, just taking that out of the budget without us getting to talk about it, or? Maybe, okay.
You tell me what you want, I'll put it in there, okay?
Well, it just got, I mean...
Nobody gave me guidance during the workshops, and I understand people and you, but that was the whole purpose of the workshops is here's what I got, tell me what you want to change, what you want me to add or detract from it.
Sure, yeah, I'm just asking questions, uh, so it was, uh, that was just talked about during the regular meeting, not the workshop, and the, the last, I think, direction given was, you know, let's see what the bids are for the restrooms.
Yeah, I don't know, I, what if, I don't know what the minutes say, I don't know if there's a...
I don't know that there was a motion on that, but I know that Steve did tell Sissy we were gonna get bids on it. Now that, because we, we talked about it being on the...
Bids are free, you're right.
Well, I mean, you have to add...
You've gotta pay an engineer to put together the specifications.
Not free.
No, nobody, not free.
Then, that's why I'm asking. If we took a vote on it, I would've voted no, so that's what I was asking.
I mean, you don't get bids on this kind of project without submitting, here's the detailed plans, specifications. Nobody's gonna bid on that unless they know how big...
What are we building?
What are we building, you know, that kind of thing.
Yeah, I just wanted to...
That's why you have an engineer set up already, so that you don't do that on every project, right? Do, do whatever you want, okay?
Okay, yeah. So, and I don't wanna muddy that by any extent, but actually I had somebody bring this point up. And I've, I've been at functions and some of y'all may have been too. They make a portable type facility that's really, I mean, it's not like a port, you know, like the River City Ball has one and, uh...
They've got sinks in it and everything.
And they have one, and I mean, it is nicer than my bathroom at home. Now, my bathroom at home is not that nice, but smells good, it is good, it's, uh, you know, they keep it clean, um...
Roadhouse has something like those.
Would that be an option? I mean, because let's just say, all right, they're calling for a flood. Well, what we go, you know, we call Roger and he runs down there and gets it. I mean, is that, is that...
The price of one of those, that, they, uh, we already got water there, so we took the water up and, and sewer down there too, so unplugging...
That sounds too good to be true. I mean, you know, I'm guessing, and again, I'm, I'm guessing you'd buy a super-duper nice one with like maybe granite for forty, fifty thousand dollars. We've been talking about three hundred and stem rate or nothing, and I know, look, but I, I just wondered if that was an option.
It's mobile, but it's not through the FEMA.
Yep, it's the, I mean, an accessory structure, an accessory structure still has to be sent through FEMA permitting. Same as, so we just had...
Food truck had to be done then, because they're on wheels.
Well, they're a think of... If there may be a time limit for that, like it's a twenty-four hour maybe?
It's a little bit different if a structure's sitting there, it's still a structure. I mean, and, and the only reason I can answer that is we just had a gentleman come in and ask about putting a Conex at Walmart, and it still has to go through flood permitting, even though it's, it's not really a permanent structure.
What if they put it on a trailer?
I mean, I can ask.
These are fully like, from, the, the ones that I've seen are like, they're, they're just fancy bathrooms on wheels.
I don't care to check into it, I've already asked you some crazy questions, so it's fine, I don't mind.
I'm making a motion that we check into it.
You don't have to. I'll still check on it, guys, I don't care to.
Do we know what the...
Forty thousand dollars is setting in for, uh, Parks and Recreation. The engineers will put on the... Getting grilled about fifteen thousand dollars of engineering fees. So made decision to put the engineering fees on hold because we don't know whether it's going forward or not. They're giving no direction, so they were gonna have to charge us fees to put together the specifications to get ready to bid, okay? There's been a lot going on here, whether you've paid attention or not, uh, and so we all have been doing the best we can. So, with that forty thousand dollars, if you want, it would be appropriate to say, okay, let's go ahead and get engineering specifications from Barge Design, who is our engineer, and put together what we have asked for, and then if you wanna bid it out, you can, or whoever wants to coordinate with the engineer and tell them this is what the electors just wanna do. Not my role, y'all get to decide, y'all get, somebody elected gets to, to work with the engineer and say, this is what we want, okay? But they can't put together specifications to put it out unless...
We pay them to do so.
Unless we pay them to do so, okay?
All right, so I think we need a motion, uh, what, a first, a motion on this first one? We need a motion in a second, then we can, I guess, discuss.
I'll make a motion.
You all make the motion.
I'll second.
So I'm paying, thank you. All right, discussion on the budget.
For fiscal year twenty-six.
Fiscal year twenty-six.
This is a motion to approve the budget.
Correct.
Anybody?
We've got a question.
All right, so we need a roll call. Does anybody have anything?
I do, I have a question. Did the employees get a, an actual raise, cost of living raise?
Employees got a two and a half percent recommendation from the department heads, which we don't consider the cost of living, but just so happens that two and a half percent fits our table, and it's also what Social Security Administration recommended for the cost of living for Social Security recipients. So, the answer to your question is yes, that is in this budget, two and a half percent, okay? For those employees that the department heads recommended on their personnel review.
Okay.
And that's most everyone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
But if we decide after looking through this, if we wanna change, we can change it for, okay, this is just for the...
Yeah, there's, we gotta do this again, I guess, next one.
And do a public hearing?
Oh.
Go to the public hearing before?
Do we have to do this? I was thinking...
I was thinking we had to do this before June 1st. Is that not right?
Now, tonight you will either reject or accept on the first reading with any changes that you give to me. Any changes that are recommended, those will go into the second reading. So what happens now is, let's say, you say increase plant fees, whatever, okay, by 10 dollars. So that gets incorporated into it. Then what we do is, two weeks before June 3rd, or whatever it is, the next one, we put it in the paper and announce a public meeting, okay? And then at the next council meeting, we have the second reading of the ordinance. After the public meeting, where the public gets to say, hey, spend more money here, don't spend more money here. And then at the second reading, that's where you make your decision, hey, we accept this budget or we don't accept this budget. So if you pass it first reading, in the second reading, that's where you decide, we accept this or we don't. And if you don't, then you got to lay out your plan for funding the town.
So tonight was the night you were supposed to take our recommendations for next time?
I actually would take recommendations when we began back in February.
We did.
If you want to make, if you want to make an amendment to it, you can pass it on second reading, subject to some amendment, as long as it doesn't change the fundamental character of the ordinance. So you can make incidental changes, you can't make big changes that are essentially passing a separate or a different budget.
I think if they wanted to say, hey, we want to fund a bathroom, they could say, hey.
They could make a change to this right now and pass it as amended on the first reading.
And if they think of something before the second one.
They can change it again, as long as it doesn't change the fundamental character of the.
During the workshop, though, we mentioned, and I specifically asked for the city hall 3.5 million to remain in the budget. But it's not in this proposal.
Council, all you got to tell me.
We already did, I already did.
Yeah, but you're one person, I need to hear the rest of you.
We didn't really take votes in the workshop, we just.
No, we don't take votes.
Well, now's the time to take a vote, so there's a.
Listen, you won't find anybody more proactive about, let's do city hall than me. But it sure didn't seem like anybody was ready to, we weren't ready to do anything.
That's not a fair assessment.
I think, I think we just don't have the right answers yet.
Okay, well, that's what I'm saying, that's why I said, decide what you want to do. I'll do what you want me to do, just tell me.
The motion on the table is to approve this as we're appropriating a three and a half million dollars would be a fundamental change. So if you want to make that appropriation, I think the action on the motion is to deny that motion. Or you can rescind it if you want to. Make a motion to pass this with the change that 3.5 million for new city hall be appropriated, appropriated as a line item.
I didn't make the motion or. I make a motion to go forward with the proposed budget by adding 3.5 million for a potential city hall.
Could that be for fixing this one or another?
Yes.
You're seconded.
Yeah.
So now we're in discussion. So all, all it would do, Scott, is just create a line item in the budget, the same one that we have fiscal year 25. That says 3.5 million is appropriated for the city hall. And then however the council decides to spend that 3.5 million is, is up to them, right?
Yeah, that's great, no problem, thank you.
Thank you.
So we, I don't know what it would cost. And that was the starting point. Previously, I feel like 3.5 is a good starting point again, because we don't know.
Everybody says you have to spend all that regardless.
That's exactly.
Well, one thing about it, if it's in a budget, it doesn't mean we have to spend it.
Yes, sir.
Well, at some point, we're going to have to really.
Dig and dig some.
Get to digging about what is, is fiscally responsible and doable.
Do we want our engineers to look at this building, you mentioned quotes, but I just want everybody to see.
I don't know that I'm ready to.
I was going to say, that's going to cost money.
Ready to say that, yeah.
I mean, like the bids for the bathrooms, I don't think we need to spend the money on the bids for the bathrooms right yet.
I think we've not, I agree.
All right, so again, and Mr. Griffin, you can help me, the, the motion that, municipal efforts, council efforts.
Just to pass this budget.
And amend it.
As amended, should add a line item for 3.5 million for new city hall.
And did that get us sent yet?
And so all you're doing is just choosing of the money that we have, the cash on hand, we're going to set aside 3.5 million of that and appropriate it for a new city hall, should you decide to build one.
All right, roll call.
Councilman Gray.
Yes.
Councilwoman Green.
Yes.
Councilwoman Gray.
Yes.
Councilman Lethbridge.
Yes.
Councilman Petty.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Can everybody stick around, please, for a 25 minute.
Can we get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
I'll just thank you, I wanted to do that, I'll be able to do that all day, all day. I don't know why.